I think the system will assist us there. Before we start, I am going to allow members of parliament seated in front to introduce themselves. We are here as members of the Ado Committee. We work as a collective and we consult one another. So our operation here are not on a party political basis. We are one collective representing the Ado Committee. If I do anything that is out of order, any member in front here has the right to call me to order, to advise me. So don't worry. And our mandate is to ensure that we treat all of you equally, regardless of which party you come from. I am Professor Mactole Mosecha. I'm the chairperson of the Ado Committee on Section 25. I will move to my extreme left and then ask the honourable member there to introduce herself and all of us will follow. Honourable女士, can you introduce?
In Kusikakulu, Sialawetu, Ika malam di ngunolita, njobongwana. Di lilo ngulale committee, A N Z W I Parliament, kukuba iti geleze elumsa Africa, ifumane izin vozenu, kulumba u gulungi so, kuka Section 25 omukatwa segwe lizo. Di kwa ngustalo we public works and infrastructure pa e Parliament, diabulela kakulu.
Mulweni, Ika malamingu Dr. Mimi Gondwe. I'm a member of this committee, a member of the Joint Standing Committee on Intelligence, and a member of the Constitutional Review Committee, diabulele.
Dumelamba chaytwa, li na lata ki dibulelo mahlazi. Gilonuko la Parliament, iwele gilonuko la committee ya agriculture, land reform and rural development. Iwele gilonuko la committee e ya Ado Committee, e berakanan leho fetulwa haf constitutionali hwa Section 25, gyalibuch.
Khue more, dumelang, mulweni, di ngungkosi zewel vilide mande. I lungu le Parliament, e begekleyo, kanye noshalo we committee yawa agriculture, land reform and rural development, engos.
Mulweni, dumelang, eh, khue more. My name is Seko Mafanya, a member of Parliament, a member in the portfolio committee of Defence and Military Veterans, thank you.
Mulweni, saobunani, dumelang, Ika malam Nazir Poulsen, ilongo le Parliament, le EFF.
Thank you very much. I guess next time when we come here, we will speak one of the other Koisan languages. The Koisan people are the first nation. King Mushweshwe said, "They are our parents." So when we also go to Parliament, I guess my colleagues will agree with me that we must recognize the Koisan languages as official languages because we cannot come here and discriminate against the Koisan people. It can happen, it has to stop. You are all welcome. I want to say something that you know very well, and you are doing very well, that we keep the social distance and we also wear our masks. And after every speaker, our officials will sanitize the mic before the next speaker comes because your health and wellbeing is paramount importance to us because unless you are safe and healthy, the work that we are doing will be futile. And in Parliament, we talk about backbenchers. But here, we don't have backbenchers. Even those who are sitting right on top there, we are going to give them equal opportunity to participate in these proceedings. And by one o'clock, we want to be out of here. And therefore, we are going to request you that every speaker will be given three minutes. And because I'm very bad in arithmetic, those who know arithmetic and maths will keep time. They will instruct me to say your time is up. And once they say your time is up, I'm bound by their decision. And I will also request that you also observe that. But we are going to treat each and every one of you equally and we don't expect that somebody speaks and later say one minute more because if we give you one minute more and the other people will want one minute more and then we disrupt the whole proceedings. So we are going to start. I had two suggestions, that we take names of everybody. But when I consulted with all political organizations, they said we must take ten, ten, and then because there are people waiting outside, that we should allow those that are outside to come in because they wouldn't be outside unless they also want to speak. So by speaking within the three minutes and creating space for those that are outside, I think that's what democracy means, that we must give one another an opportunity to make an input. So I guess that is clear. I am left-handed, so I always start my proceedings from the left. So I will start with this rows from here. But I'll take all the hands in this row and we're going to... Yes, I'll take all the hands from here and then you will be given stickers and only those people who have stickers, then they will be the ones that are going to speak. And then we move this side. But before we take hands, you will remember that it's not the first time that a committee of Parliament goes through the whole country. But that committee of Parliament was not this one. It was called Constitutional Review Committee. It came to you to ask one question. And that one question was whether or not it is desirable to amend Section 25 of the Constitution to allow expropriation of land without compensation. And because we operate on the basis of democratic majority, the democratic majority said, yes, the Constitution must be amended to allow expropriation of land without compensation. But that committee didn't have the authority to amend the Constitution. Therefore, Parliament decided to establish an Ado Committee represented by these honourable members to come back to you, not to put the same question, but to put another question. That question is, what must be the content of the amendment? So today, we only want to address the content of the amendment. You must tell us what must be in the new Section 25. And all of you have opinions or mandates from your organizations. You don't have to agree, but we want each and every one of you to carry out your mandate, to express your opinion. So those who don't agree with you, it doesn't matter. That is their mandate, is their opinion. You state your opinion. We also respect that you also have different slogans. You are entitled to a slogan. But if you waste time sloganeering, you will eat the time that you need to tell us what you want. And also, if a speaker says something that you like, if you praise the speaker, the mic will pick up the praise songs and not the content of what you are going to say. So when we go to Parliament, what will happen is that we will have captured the noise. We have brought the best qualified officials from Parliament. They are going to capture everything. And we also have the most qualified interpreters. You can use any language, they will interpret you without adding anything. So you are in safe hands of the Parliament, of the Republic of South Africa. And our democracy is a representative and a participatory Parliament. You elected people to represent you in Parliament, but you are representative in Parliament. Don't pretend to be clever than you or to have the monopoly of wisdom. That's why we have not sat in Cape Town and taken decisions. We are back here, we want your wisdom. Please give us your wisdom so that when we go back, we make a law. That law must reflect what you want, not what we want as your representative. And I must say again, we appreciate the fact that you are here orderly and respecting the COVID-19 regulations. And you can see that we are doing much better than other countries which thought they were more civilized than us because we have more recoveries, more survivors, because we are a law-abiding people. Let's keep it up because the future generations and depends on what we do. Therefore, what we do now, we must do correctly so that we lead by example. So I will start. If you see any one of the people sitting in front whispering for me, they are not interfering with me. Because I'm not a dictator, I work within the collective. So if they see me doing anything out of order, any one of them will send me a message or correct me so that I also don't represent myself here. I represent the collective that is in front. So I will start this side. And I am colorblind. I am colorblind. So I'm going to take the hands as they come. And first, where are the people with stickers? You can all raise your hands and then all those people who have raised their hands must be given stickers. One, two, three, four, five, six, yeah, all these rows this side. When I'm done here, I'll come back to yourselves. So just relax. Pardon? Yeah, no, no, this row right up to the wall. Yeah, okay, no, that's fine. We start. Please, after every speaker, we sanitize and then three-minute rule applies. Let the first one begin, thank you very much.
Thank you Chairperson, and protocol observed on your committee. Honourable parliamentarians, your officials. I'm Zwanile Douglas Jacobs, well known as DJ ZY, an EFF councillor in Witsenbeck, Siraas Amlet, Tulpa Bogfeld. I am moved by the way the farmers are using government money, or schemes. Schemes are sent to farmers by the government, but it's not utilized the way it should be. People, when they want their shares in December, they are expelled in farms. That's why I make a declaration on behalf of EFF. Declaration on constitutional amendment allow for expropriation of land without compensation. I'm Zwanile Jacobs, residing in Duli 158, Pagamisa Street in Siraas. Hereby declare that I support the amendment of Section 25 of the Constitution to allow for expropriation of land without compensation. This amendment is crucial for the decolonization of our society, for guarantee, redress, for colonial and apartheid land dispossession and for ensuring equitable distribution of land in South Africa. I submit that the amendment of Section 25 of the Constitution must look as follows. Number 25, property. Number one, the state, including Parliament, executive and judiciary, carry an obligation to redress imbalances of will achieve redress and equitably distribute all resources. Number 225, property. Property may be expropriated without compensation only in terms of law of general application, A, B, or a public purpose or in the public interest. I urge, as the member of EFF, remove Section 3 and replace with: Number three, the state should be custodian of all South Africa's natural resources, inclusive of land, mineral resources and water. And relevant legislation should be passed to clearly define and contextualize state custodianship of natural resources. And number four, for the purpose of this section, the public interest includes the nation's commitment to land reform and to reforms to bring about equitable access to all South Africa's natural resources. And B, property is not limited to land. Number five, the state must take reasonable legislative and other measures with its available resources to foster conditions which enable citizens to gain access to land on an equitable basis. Number six, a person or community whose tenure of land is legally insecure as a result of past radically discriminated laws or practices is entitled to the extent provided by an act of Parliament, either to tenure which is legally secure or to comparable.
Note, so that what we have not said, we will capture it. I'm at the end, Chairperson. I'm finished. No, no, the time is up. Give us the note, thank you. You provided good example, you observed time, you gave us the note. I think we should all follow that example.
Greetings to the committee, greetings to the chairperson, a special acknowledgement to our commissars, Commissar Tsape and Commissar Nazir. My name is Nosipoma Kamaboya, the deputy chairperson of the EFF and a member of provincial parliament. The bill proposed by Parliament does not really amend Section 25 of the Constitution. What it does, it repeats the same section. On that note, as Nosipoma Kamaboya residing in Cape Town, I hereby declare that I support the amendment of Section 25 of the Constitution to allow for expropriation of land without compensation. This amendment is crucial for the decolonization of our society, for guaranteed redress, for colonial and apartheid land dispossession and for ensuring equitable distribution of land in South Africa. I submit that the amendment of Section 25 of the Constitution must look as follows. The property, the state, including Parliament, executive and judiciary, carry an obligation to redress imbalances of the past through enactment of laws that will achieve redress and equitable distribution of all resources. Property may be expropriated without compensation only in terms of law of general application or public purpose in the public interest. Remove Section 3 and replace with the following. The state should be the custodian of all South Africa's natural resources, inclusive of land, mineral resources and water. And relevant legislation should be passed to clearly define, contextualize state custodianship of natural resources. For this purpose of this section, the public interest includes the nation's commitment to land reform and to reform to bring about equitable access to all South Africa's natural resources and property is not limited to land. Remove subsection seven. No provision of this section may impede the state from taking legislative and other measures to achieve land, water and related reform in order to redress the result of the past racial discrimination provided that any departure from the provision of section in accordance with the provision of Section 36.1. Parliament must enact the legislation referred to the subsection six. I just want to put some submission that we are having a serious challenge in the Western Cape, specifically with black farmers who are emerging farmers, small-scale farmers who have a red tape because they can't access grant funding from government because every time they want to access the funding, they are told as a condition that they must bring a title deed or a lease agreement, of which our people do not have that. So the only people actually benefit in this grant funding of the government is only white farmers. So on that note, I support the changes of Section 25, thank you.
All those that have been recognized, they must line up behind the two mics so that we don't waste time.
I, Mimitandwe Williams, state that ANC submission on the Constitution 8th Amendment Bill 2019, the ANC supports expropriation of land as a just and equitable process to restore the dignity of our people in addressing the land question and the expropriation of land without compensation is part of the process. We are convinced by evidence that the willing buyer, willing seller model did not work. For the ANC, land reform is about addressing historical injustices and dispossession of black majority. It is also a vital opportunity to unlock growth and promote social economic transformation. The ANC's land reform program provides a radical way to address the land question and build productive assets for our people and ensure food and security. One, we submit that on Section 25, clause 1, 4, 5, 6 and 9 should remain as they are. Two, on clause 2, we make the following amendment. Add a new sub-clause 2c, which must read as follows: Subject to without compensation or nil compensation under condition laid out in the law of general application. Three, on clause 3, which speaks about property, we make the following amendment to the first line of the clause. Everything after that remains the same. To read as follows: Where compensation is payable, the amount of the compensation and the time and the manner of payment must be just and equitable and etc. Four, on clause 7, we make the following submission that for the purpose of this hearing, all it takes remains as is. Five, on clause 8, we make the following amendment in the first line of the clause as follows and everything thereafter remains the same. No provision of this section, including the payment of compensation, may impede the state etc. In conclusion, expropriation of land is just and equitable process to restore the dignity of our people. This expropriation must be done by executing authority and executive and only where there is a dispute which cannot be resolved can it then be referred to judicial. Thanks. Thanks.
I, Nomsamo Zoya, residing at Dragonstone, hereby declare that I support the amendment of section twenty-five of the Constitution to allow for expropriation of land without compensation. This amendment is crucial for the decolonization of our society, for guaranteeing redress for colonial and apartheid land dispossession, and for ensuring equitable redistribution of land in South Africa. I submit that the amendment of section twenty-five of the Constitution must look as follows. Property may be expropriated without compensation only in terms of law of general application or a public purpose or in the public interest. Thank you.
Greetings to the members of the committee, special greeting to the EFF Commissars. I, Quella Wenene, residing at Zuletemba, hereby declare that I support the amendment of section twenty-five of the Constitution to allow the expropriation of land without compensation. This amendment is crucial for the decolonization of our society, for guaranteeing the redress for the colonial and apartheid land dispossession, and for ensuring the equitable redistribution of land in South Africa. I submit that the amendment of section twenty-five of the Constitution must look as follows. Section twenty-five, property. The state, including Parliament, Executive and Judiciary, carry an obligation to redress the imbalances of the past through enactment of laws that will achieve the redress and the equitable redistribution of all resources. Section twenty-five two, property may be expropriated without compensation. To A, only in terms of the law of the general application. To B, or a public purpose or in public interest. Remove section three and replace it with, the state should be custodial of all South African natural resources, including the land, mineral resources and water, and relevant legislation should be passed to clearly define and to clearly define and conceptualize the state custodianship of natural resources. Four, for the purpose of this section, for A, the public interest includes the nation's commitment to the land reforms and to reform to bring about equitable access to all South African natural resources. And for B, property is not limited to land. Five, the state must take reasonable legislative and other measures within its available resources to foster the conditions which enable the citizens to gain access to the land on an equitable basis. Six, a person or a community whose nature of land is legally insecure as a result of the past racial discriminatory laws or practices is entitled or to the extent of provincial by the Act of Parliament, either to which is legally secure or to comparably redress. Remove subsection seven. No provision of this section may impede the state from taking legislative and other measures to achieve the land, water and related reforms in order to redress the results of past racial discrimination, provided that any departure of the provisions of this section is in accordance with the provision of section thirty-six one. Parliament must enact the legislation referred to subsection six. I thank you.
Can you give the, raise your hands, and then you, uh, this side now. Uh, we'll give you stickers this side. I see someone there, I think he was not in when we started. Give him a sticker, yeah. All those who have stickers must line up behind the two mics so that we don't waste time. Yeah, you can come, yeah, this side, line up this side. Line up this side, yeah, yeah, okay. So, you can, the lady, oh, there's someone on the stage, you can start.
Thank you Chairperson, good day, honorable MPs and the committee. My name is Mongesi Ramochale, I reside here in Zuletemba. I hereby declare that I support the amendment of section twenty-five of the Constitution to allow for expropriation of land without compensation. I submit that the amendment of section twenty-five of the Constitution must look at as follows. Property. One, the state, including Parliament, Executive and Judiciary, carry an obligation to redress imbalances of the past through enactment of laws that will achieve redress and equitably redistribute all resources. Property may be expropriated without compensation only in terms, A, only in terms of general application, in terms of law of general application, B, or in a public purpose or in the public interest. Remove section three and replace with, uh, number three. The state should be custodian of all South Africa's natural resources, inclusive of land, mineral resources and water, and relevant legislation should be passed to clearly define and conceptualize state custodianship of the natural resources. Four, for the purposes of this section, the public interest includes the nation's commitment to land reform and to reforms to bring about equitable access to all South Africa's natural resources. And B, property is not limited to land. So, we expropriate land, including property. The state must take reasonable legislative and other measures within its available resources to foster conditions which enable citizens to gain access to land on an equitable basis. A person or community whose tenure of land is legally insecure as a result of the past racially discriminatory laws or practices is entitled to the extent provided by the Act of Parliament, either to tenure which is legally secure or to comparable redress. Remove section seven. No provision of this section may impede the state from taking legislative and other measures to achieve land, water and related reform in order to redress the results of past.
Okay, thank you. So that we can, yeah. We will include even what you have not said because it's written there. Please, everybody who speaks must introduce themselves. Take a seat, I think the lady came first. Everyone who speaks, introduce yourself, and please, I won't stop you in the middle of the sentence. When we say time up, finish the sentence, but give us the notes.
Greetings everyone, greetings to the committee, special greetings to my Commissars of the EFF. I'm Vanessa Mele, PR Councillor of the EFF, residing in Breda Valley. Zuletemba, hereby I declare that I support the amendment of section twenty-five of the Constitution to allow the expropriation of land without compensation. This amendment is crucial for decolonization of our society, for guaranteeing the redress of colonial and apartheid land dispossession, for assuring equitable redistribution of land in South Africa. I submit that the amendment of section twenty-five of the Constitution must look as follows. The state, including Parliament, Executive and Judiciary, carry an obligation to redress imbalance of the past through enactment of laws that will be achieved redress and equitably distributed to all resources. Property may be expropriated without compensation only in terms of law of general application or a public purpose or in public interest. Remove section three and replace with, three, the state should be custodian of all South Africans' natural resources, inclusive of land, mineral resources and water, and relevant legislation should be passed to clearly define and conceptualize state custodianship of natural resources. For the purpose of this section, the public interest includes the nation's commitment and land reform and to reform to bring about equitable access to all South Africans', South Africa's natural resources, and property is not limited to land. The state must take responsible legislative and other measures without available resources to foster conditions which enable citizens to gain access to land on an equitable basis. A person or community whose tenure of land is legally insecure as a result of past racially discriminatory laws or practices is entitled to extent provided by an act of Parliament, either to tenure which is legally secure or to comparable redress. Remove section seven. No provision of this section may impede the state from taking legislative and other measures to achieve land, water and related reform in order to redress the results of past racial discrimination, provided that any departure from the provisions of this section is in accordance with the provision of section thirty-six one. Parliament must enact the legislation referred to in subsection six. Thank you.
Shall I speak? Molweni, Engos Mshalanga Pambili. I might not have a presentation in writing, as I think Okanya is see, in Obana there's a submission that says why. But, I do have a mandate based on Eku Shalim. I worked a lot in Uwanele Nyembe, this Sukakwinda, who said Torrance. You might recall, two, three days ago, EN one has been closed recently, based on Imeko Yeso Msaba, Abantu Bagutia, Banamshaba, Abantu Bagut. And Abantu Betu Basala, Ebu Twabin, at Torrance. Abantu Betu Bafuna Uxal, I mean Msaba Uxal. Abantu Betu Bafuna Umsaba, for Rukfarma. Because we, our mothers, our forefathers, have made these white people rich. Each and every year, after a season, they write the highest Okanya Ezo na moto, Eziturayo, Ngamantya Uwane Betu. I therefore challenge you, Man, Jembukla Portfolio Committee. Abantu Betu Basmandetin, Okokubana, it's time now for implementation, implementation, implementation. It's twenty-five years down the line, Abantu Betu patiently, Berlin deal. Yes, I understand what the Chairperson is saying to us, to say that a review committee didn't have demanded, right, to change section twenty-five, right? However, us as Hacksville Support Organization, at the community at large, we're unchallenged. We support what our leader has presented here. A leader of the ANC, the submission is made, but there's one portion that is left. Is to say, Sifuna, Abantu Betu Bafunu Bonanguk, is in those sense. We know it processes as the Parliament tend to delay at some point, and our people at grassroots level doesn't understand the processes. Our people want implementation. We therefore support what my leader has presented there. Secondly, Jingu Anele Nyembe, I'm the victim of apartheid nineteen seventy-six. We were born, twenty-six families, Sukakwinda, next to a length peg as we go towards EN one. There's a place called Imantis Fund, in a small area. There were twenty-six families there. They were evicted nineteen seventy-six by force, right, to come and stay at Torrance. Now, they mandated us to say in this submission.
Time up, but give your contacts to those gentlemen because we want to follow up the concerns that you are raising.
Thank you. The amendment, section twenty-five, expropriation of land without compensation.
He's just interpreting.
Greetings Chairperson, I am Tumelo from Ivory Park. I thank the opportunity, and this is a very beautiful gathering, especially that the thieves are not here. We stay in Limbo's because we stay with our livestock. Our people need land for housing, we need land for our livestock. When the thieves came to this land or this country, they did not come carrying land on their shoulders or livestock. They attacked our forefathers, assaulted and killed them to take their land and their livestock. But today we have to buy from them the livestock. But today we have to buy from them the livestock that we used to have. And even today, the kind of houses you are staying in, the RDP houses, are very, very small whilst they are in possession of many hectares of land. And they stay in farms which have double protection with double gates that we have to pass before you reach where they are staying, whilst you are staying in small houses which are RDP houses together with our children. So I support what has been said by the previous speakers named Tmimi, that the process should not be delayed. Now is time for action, we cannot wait for any longer. I thank you.
Greetings all members of parliament. I'm Tukulomjana, residing at N'wuli series and a victim per municipality. Here hereby declare that I support the amendment of section twenty-five of the Constitution to allow for expropriation of land without compensation. This amendment is crucial for the decolonization of our society, for guaranteeing retraits for colonial and apartheid land dispossession, and for ensuring equitable distribution of land in South Africa. I submit that the amendment of section twenty-five of the Constitution must look as follows. Twenty-five, property. Number one, the state, including parliament, executive and judiciary, carry an obligation to redress imbalances of the past through enactment of laws that will achieve redress and equitable distribut of resources. Two, property may be expropriated without compensation. A, only in terms of law of general application. B, or a public purpose or in the public interest. Please, I urge that remove section three and replace with number three. The state should be custodian of all South African, of all South Africa's natural resources, inclusive of land, mineral resources and water. And relevant legislation should be passed to clearly define and contextualize state custodianship of natural resources. Eh, ndikela nje, ufakela nje, enye indo yoba. After asimuni kwe amendi welo mte. See akela u government, special obandawa nyama. Ta uniga omshaba abantu abatiale. Please, u government, mala hoye ngundoba. Banga tiali je abantu glamshaba, kiba aba yekelele. U government, mala bangetise, ngutu ba markete. Kwe shop schoolu, eshala oma shop right, oma pigendpe injalonja. Because indo abantu ba chala, wabantu omshaba ba chale, emwakaku government abachi gelele. Indo sa bandu suboli, singa oywa. Nupela wabantu benige sa bepi sa ngazu sindo. Kwa hatu kotwa wabana bamshop ebona, bayacha la, goba watu cha ucha la izindo, bangetu sa u government. Abangetu sa mama markete kutu oma markete, kuma pigendpe, kuma shop right ngalonja. So see akela naati singa bandu, aban nyama, special obandawa nyama. After lomte tumandu kwe sawa unigumshaba, see kela u government asungetise. Asungetise naati pi, kuma shop right, kuma pigendpe injalonja. Nkosi.
I want to add on what I already said, that I suggest that the government should not just give people land. When giving them land to exercise farming, government should also monitor the way they operate and also allow them to get access to big markets like pigendpe, shop rights and so forth. They should not be just given land and left unattended. And as a result, some of their produce get damaged or got rotten and they have to lose whilst they have invested in our, in the marketing, in the gardening that they have exercised and the produce that they think they would depend on for their livelihood.
Okay, thank you very much for your cooperation. Now we will get the hands from the top. Give them stickers as you get the stickers come to down. I think we are doing very, very well because of your cooperation. Give everybody who has raised their hand a sticker and as soon as you get the sticker, come down. Please, there's too much movement here. Those who are going out, let them go out quietly and leave space for those who are coming in. Those who are coming with stickers, sit behind the mic. Those who have been recognized to speak, this row shift so that those with stickers can sit. Can we now have order? And we proceed. The officials. Yes. I'm advised that those who have spoken have now left. So those who have been recognized to speak should come in. Yeah. But now, there are many of you who are bringing papers. I think we need a box where you can just throw the papers because we also don't want to endanger the health of the officials. Because you can't, we are not sanitizing the papers. We must have a paper, we just throw them in a box. Now we can proceed. You introduce yourselves and then three minutes rule. When we stop you, we don't mean to be rude. We mean to treat all of you equally. And but when you are in the middle of a sentence, I won't stop you. You finish the sentence and then you don't start another sentence. Thank you very much, proceed. Thank you, decide.
My name is Sydney Claussen, I'm from Drakenstein. I just want to say that the farm owners in the Drakenstein area tells us a lot of tall tales and we don't get what we should get. I would like section twenty-five to be amended as quickly as possible so that the people of the Koi and the Sun community can get their land back in the Skulpadberg area. Thank you.
Honorable Chair, Members of Parliament, officials, all protocol observed. My name is Charles Jacobs. I'm here from Worcester, Worcester South. I declare on the ANC submission of the Constitution eighteen amendment bill twenty-nineteen, the ANC supports expropriation of land as a just and equitable process to restore the dignity of our people in addressing the land question. We are convinced by evidence that the willing buyer, willing seller model did not work. For the ANC, land reform is about addressing historical injustices and disposing of the black majority. It is also a vital opportunity to unlock growth and promote the socio-economic transformation. The ANC land reform program provides a radical way to address the land question and build productive assets for our people and ensure food security. We submit that on section twenty-five clauses one, four, five, six and nine should remain as they are. On clause two, we make the following amendment. Add a new subclause two C which must read as follow. Subject to without compensation for nil compensation under the conditions laid out in law of the general application. On clause three, which speaks about property, we make the following amendment to the first line of the clause. Everything after remains the same. Where it reaches follows. Where compensation is payable, the amount of compensation and the time and manner of payment must be just and equitable. Point four on clause seven, we make the following submission, that for the purpose of these hearings, only the text remains as it is. Point five, on clause eight, we make the following amendment in the first line of the clause as follow and everything thereafter remains the same. No provision of this section, including the payment of compensation, may implicate, impede the state. In conclusion, expropriation of land is a just and equitable process to restore the dignity of our people. The expropriation must be done by an executing authority. The executive and only where there is a dispute which cannot be resolved, can it then be referred to the judiciary. On the Western Cape, we move to move fast. Land is being selling faster in the Western Cape. Land expropriation without compensation must start in the Western Cape. Thank you, government.
My submission, my name is Mzwanile Kanyisokagu. I stay at two twenty-one Mainga Avenue here in Zule Temba. My submission is contained in the declaration, your worship. Honorable Chairperson, my apologies. My submission is contained here and I submit that everything that is contained in this piece of paper in terms of, or with regard to amendment of section twenty-five is contained here, Honorable Chairperson. I however wish to make two further submissions. One, in regard to the limitation of the amount of property that South Africans should have, especially in regard to ownership by foreign nationals, that should also be contained in future. Honorable Chairperson, I also wish to make a further submission regarding state ownership of property, not only limited to property that is natural resources and property contained here. I'm tempted to also say that all other property, including state-owned SOEs, state parastaters. My question is, in whose interests should all those properties to be sold out to private hands? Otherwise, if we do that, Chairperson, I feel that we are letting our economy out of the hands of the ownership of South Africans. That's my submission, Chairperson, thank you.
Goyemora, aniparlement, ekkan Afrikaans praat. My name is Betty Fortein, ek is van de Dorans. Ja. Ek stem saam. Ons asse organisasi stem saam edhi groonton ayenong sonder vergooding. Maar wat ons wal, he, mutge kik, dat mutge begin woord bei di famili's medhi desende desende hektar groonde. Dat mut verdeel woord an di arre mensa. And dan mut di parlement uki na di plaas vrowens. Wan ek dang di mederit van di mensa wat in i woonbeert eblei, werk obi plaase. Dat mut gekik woord na di vrowens wat di groont bewerk. Dan, dan na mut di parlament skik. So that da kan groonton ayenong für di vrowens gegeen woord. And dan vra ons, dat ons wali net groonton ayenong he, net omdat het gegeen mut woord. Ons wil groonton ayenong he, für land bouw, für behaising. Wan ons wat obi plaase blei, asos autos atos i plek om te gaan blei ni, ons wil für behaising en so voorts. En ook für nalating an ons kinders. Want as ons plaas vrowens, endag doodga na tus kinders nairns om te gaan ni, asse bliv parlement kik dan na. Na di arremste van di arre mensa. Dat's wat ons wali. En. Ja. And dan vra ons, asse bliv, kik na di opkomende klein boere. Kik na ale. Want sonne resources kan da ni ek klein boer wesi. Want di kommerse yele boere etal rits ale. So ons klein boere sekal om optekom opale beene. Baya danki.
Baya danki salonsnow, fertalken kreyas.
To you all, I am Mrs. Fortein from the Dorans. And firstly, I want to say that I agree with expropriation without compensation. But I would like it to start with the families who own thousands of hectares of farmland, that they start there. And also particular attention should be given to the women who work on farms. And especially those who work on land, because not all of them live on the farms, work the land. What I particularly also want is that with this expropriation, that it is for agricultural land as well as for housing. And with housing, we must look at ownership so that when we pass on, we can bequeath these houses or land to our children. I especially want to just say that you must look at emerging farmers and also the small farmers, because they also struggle and they also want to reach a higher stage in farming. Thank you.
Give that gentleman a sticker and he must come to. Give him the two, give those two stickers and they must come to service. Proceed.
Greetings to the community and the committee of the parliament. I, Atengosi Bukai, residing at Worcester. Hereby declare that I support the amendment of section twenty-five of the Constitution.
Sorry, sorry. Can we reduce the noise levels so that we can hear the speakers? Please, those in the hall.
My name is Maj Van Arten, I'm from Wuster. And if you miss it, is it my Neemandela where it is? Or is it my car in the maatsgebouw in mid? In the 2002s. I will begin there to say, I was brought up by the ground until 1998. For a while, and I have been very proud of it. I spit my tooth on the name of the place. I do a lot of research for the people. In all provinces, especially the west coast. The ANC had built a house in Wusteren. I think it's the only place in the whole land where the ANC has built a home. And I have met a friend in Babylon by the Lutuleus. I do the research for that too. Then I talk mainly to people from the west coast. The Dorrings, Roosenville, and all the remaining places. Their ancestors have the place best. Some of their water rights have been taken away. At the beginning, it was a rent-rented place. But before the ANC could become, it was taken away from them. That's what the research indicates. And I would like the government of the day to keep looking at that. Let them take back the places we have recovered. Thank you.
Can we get the interpretation, please? The explanation of the point where I talked.
What explanation?
He said that it's a research that has been done from the places and water rights. We should give it a try.
What explanation?
He said that it's a research that has been done from the places and water rights. We should give it a try. Give it a try.
That's by my eyes. Minister Squatcha, Deputy Minister Squatcha of Yerifan.
Okay, good. Thank you. Thank you.
Good day to you all. My name is Maj Van Arten. I'm from Wuster. I just want to say that I've been involved in land claims since 1998. And I'm doing research on land claims for people across the western Cape and across the country, and especially these surrounding areas like Roosenville and so forth. I'm speaking on behalf of these people in the western Cape where it is about the water rights that have been taken away because they used to rent on the rent scheme, as I understand it. And I would like these to be set right so that the descendants of these people whose farms or whose land had been taken away can eventually get access to it. Thank you.
As a collective, as you said. Do you know what I'm saying? And this is what I'm saying. The class in the ANC, I don't know how to explain it. It's a lot of shit, a lot of shit. And it's a lot of things. I was at Swiss Boons in 2005, when the summit was held in Nazareth. When I was there, I was very angry. I was very angry. I was very angry. I was at the place, I270. I was at the committee in Fokalshomo. They said, "Don't worry about it." I was worried about the people. They were sending messages to the people. The mayor, he was very angry.
Translation?
I'm saying, "Thank you to the chairperson and the delegation at large." I won't be long. I want just to touch one issue. Firstly, I want to start by saying I support the expropriation of land without compensation. I want to touch one issue, one of my colleagues or previous speakers which left out. That the issue of land. There was a land summit that took place in 2005 in Nazareth. Where we liberated about various issues, explicitly about the issue of the land. And one other issue that I think is relevant, that needs to be included, is that there are four farmers, which include 270 farms. I think when we apply or implement this bill after it has been amended, we should make the point that no farmer should, or no one individual should own more than one property. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Avi Filis. I'm from McGregor. And I understand that section 25 of the law has been changed. Who came? Firstly, 1966 and 1967, it was our land that was removed. It's the title act of our land. It's the biggest part of the Langerberg region. What our people believe. So, that's why it's necessary. That the land should come back to the rightful inheritance of the land. Secondly, I want to ask you, because I was brought up with the places and the places, because I was a member of the ANC. I want to ask you that it must be looked at by the local workers themselves. The houses that they live in. That they must actively write down the houses. I also want to ask you that the protection of our local workers must be looked at by the local workers. Because we have to work together in rural development here. That's the problem. Lastly, I would like to ask you. The ANC does its best to help people on the ground. And I'm talking now to the secretary of the local board in McGregor. The local board has received the rural development here. Here, locally. So, I would like to ask you that it must be looked at by our people on the place, as well as in our town. Thank you.
I'm Avi Filis from McGregor. Firstly, I want to say that I support the amendment of section 25. And you'd ask me why. Firstly, I want to say that in 1966 and in 1967, our land was taken away. And here I'm talking about the Langerberg region. And I have the title deeds to prove it. And I hope that as soon as this takes place, that the land will be returned to its rightful owners. We must also ask that you must urgently look at the plight of the farmworkers, especially when it comes to housing. Farmworkers have received very little assistance from rural development. The ANC does its best to help people at grassroots level. But somewhere, something is going wrong. We're looking at small farmers. The financial assistance that the small farmers were supposed to get seems as if it was stolen and they did not receive this necessary assistance. And I ask you to look at these matters urgently. Thank you.
That gentleman behind the camera is actually trying to help people to link them with the officials so that they can submit the documents that they have. There are people who had valuable info. Yeah, that gentleman there. Pendula, that gentleman has valuable information. Just get it. The man in green. Proceed.
I'm listening to the parliament. I'm listening to the committee. I'm listening to the committee. Because the torrent, it's a lot of stuff. Because the torrent, it's a lot of stuff. And then it's a lot of stuff. It's a lot of stuff. Because it's a lot of stuff. And then it's a lot of stuff. I think it's 13 to 14 years. It's a lot of stuff. It's a lot of stuff. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairperson. I'm also a caller from the torrent. I'll come back to you. Let's get the interpretation. I think let's just get the contacts of that lady. Because it means women and children are in trouble in that area. We need to follow up on that problem. Can you?
I'm also a caller from the torrent. I thank the opportunity. I want to say to the committee that in the area where I'm staying, people are staying in limbo because we don't have proper housing because of land. We also stay under electrical wires, which are very dangerous to us and our children. The municipality of that area refused to give us land to build houses. So we urge you to come, to arrest you. That we really need land very urgently, not only for farming but for housing. Thank you.
Now, I'm going to recognize additional hands. And I've done something that we are not all agreed on. You know, if people raise a situation which endangers the lives of people, especially women and children, regardless of which party is responsible, we have a responsibility to attend to it. Because women and children are dying in our country. And we have to intervene. We can't turn a blind eye. And we are not persecuting any political party. But any municipality, whether it's ANC, EFF, DA. If the lives of women and children are in danger, we will intervene. So I'll take hands. Yeah, so give them stickers. Pendula. There are some people at the top who raised their hands. They must come down. If there are people at the top who want to speak, they must come down. Quietly. Now, we are done. I'm advised. Give those ladies stickers. Oh, okay. The stickers are finished for now. Those people who want to speak, who don't have stickers, they can sit that side. We will come back to them. Yeah, those hands, let them go over there. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay. Siabulela. Let's start. Let's start from this side.
I'm Isaac Sabile from Wuster, Zaletemba. I state that the ANC's submission on the constitutional 18 amendment bill, the ANC that support, the ANC's support expropriation of land as a just and equitable process to restore the dignity of our people in addressing the land question and expropriation of land without compensation. As a part of that process, we are convinced by evidence that the willing buyer, willing seller model did not work. For the ANC land reform is about redressing historical injustice and dispossession of black majority. It is also a vital opportunity to unlock growth and promote socioeconomic transformation. The ANC land reform program provides a radical way of, radical way to address the land question and build a productive asset for our people and to ensure food security. On this bill, from page one of, page one of three. One, we submit that on the section 25 clauses, one comma, one, and four, and five, and six, and nine should remain as they are. Two, on clause two, we make the following amendment. Add a new subclause 2C, which must read as follows. Subject to, without compensation or nil compensation under conditions laid out in the law of general application. Three, clause three, which speaks about property. We make as following amendment to the first line of the clause. Everything after the amendment remains the same. To read as follow. We, where compensation is payable, the amount of the compensation and land, compensation and the time and the manner of payment must be just and equitable. From page two to of page three. Four, on clause seven, we make the following submission. That for the purposes of these hearings, only the next remain ease. On the clause eight, in conclusion.
Submit your document.
Okay, okay.
Thank you. Lastly? No, no, time is, there's no lastly. With respect.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Gabesit.
I says, "Good morning, good morning." Thank you to the chairperson. Thank you to the chairperson, members of parliament. A particular welcome to Chief Madiba, to our beautiful Bualan region. And especially our warrior in the parliament, Honorable Nazir Paulson. Also, I hope you enjoy the beautiful scenery after this hearing. My name is Kuba A. Melvin Arensa. I'm the great grandson of Hendra Kaffir-Kurana, the last ruler of the Kuranas in the former Cape colony. I wish to state officially that the Kai Kurana kingship and royal house support the ANC 18th amendment of the constitution, 2019. This has been a struggle since 1912, where the ANC was formed in Haydedal, in a little church in our kraal of Bloemfontein. This speaks to nine generational wars we had to face in our family for close to 250 years. Every single man in our family has died after the children was born. None of the chiefs in our family have ever known a grandfather because they died in the frontier wars for five generations in a row. What we have today in our districts is generational poverty, the consequence of a military occupation that was installed by the Dutch and the British respectively. You as a government are obligated to enforce the law. And we fully support the amendment of the constitution as a moral obligation on this government to bring justice. We never had a codessa. The codessa just discussed the question of the apartheid era crimes. Our Koi and San people never had closure in terms of what was done to us. Not in the genocide and the generational poverty that was caused by the Kaladan declaration, the 1909 mission station, and the 1930 Native Land Act. There is no such a thing in our territories as Kurana. We are Kurana and Inguni. Because to survive in our districts, we're treated with the Fingo, the Pondo, and the Abatembo. And we cannot be segregated in this generation again. We want to clarify the question of land restitution in the articles of this amendment. The question of land restitution has a specific set of definitions in terms of the entitlement of Koi people to have their land restored. And as such, also the Inguni people who lost their lands in the western Cape. There is a horrible ignorance that says black people cannot have land in the western Cape. The western Cape, eastern Cape, and northern Cape was one province. It was one territory when we were dispossessed. You as a government divided it again into three provinces. In our memory of our ancestors, it is still one province. We have a particular concern about farmworkers and small emerging black farmers who get no access to land. They have their land confiscated by municipalities. They cannot get lease or any access to land on municipal level. We are requesting, where do we make our written submissions to the parliamentary committee? We want to make our full representations from all our districts in this matter to the standing committee in parliament.
I'm biased in favor of the Koi San people. And we want your submission and your contact so that we can even follow on the history of our royal family.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Next.
I'm listening to the parliament. I'm listening to the parliament. I'm listening to the parliament. Section 3. I'm listening to the parliament. 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 I'm listening to the parliament.
Thank you. In case we don't have translation, this has been recorded. When we get to parliament, we will translate that input. So I can see you are stressed because you don't want to make a misrepresentation. Can we move this side? I'm listening to the parliament.
I, Sabelo Maklati, state that the ANC's submission on the constitution 18th amendment bill of 2019, the ANC supports expropriation of land as a just and equitable process to restore the dignity of our people in addressing the land question and the expropriation of land without compensation is part of that process. We are convinced by evidence that the willing buyer, willing seller model did not work. For the ANC, land reform is about redressing historical injustices and dispossession of the black majority. It is also a vital opportunity to unlock growth and promote socioeconomic transformation. The ANC's land reform program provides a radical way to address the land question and build productive assets for our people and ensure food security. We submit that on section 25 clauses 1, 4, 5, 6, and 9 should remain as they are. On clause 2, we make the following amendment. Add a new subclause 2C, which must read as follows. Subject to without compensation or nil compensation under conditions laid out in the law of general application. On clause 3, which speaks about property, we make the following amendment to the first line of the clause. Everything after that remains the same. To read as follow. Where compensation is payable, the amount of the compensation and time and manner of payment must be just and equitable. On clause 7, we make the following submission. That for the purpose of these hearings, only the tax remains as ease. On clause 8, we make the following amendment in the first line of the clause as follows and everything thereafter remains the same. No provision of this action, including the payment of compensation, may impede the state, etc. In conclusion, expropriation of land is a just and equitable process to restore the dignity of our people. This expropriation must be done by the executing authority, the executive, and only where there is a dispute which cannot be resolved, can it be referred to a judiciary. Thank you.
Please, let's sanitize. Let's sanitize before the next speaker.
I'm listening to the parliament. I'm listening to the parliament. I'm listening to the parliament. However, I'm listening to the parliament. I'm listening to the parliament. I'm listening to the process be transparent. Inleleksa unikuangaya bantu ibe transparent. Sitikiwa indoba skutwe usavtenwa imixaba kuhurumente. Sitibane na bantu webe se parlamente, sitibane na bobeni mixa bene farmer. Sitela i process be transparent so that naditina bantu bangazua esenge ko parlamente sikuazufikele lemixabeni. Okwesbi, wii vekez pele yo sekase sekase sa visitela bantu basale ma plasi. Nditelindo i wine, kana gumde anui kui plas, envakuayo yonkele ndubao upasisi ulom tetu. Inta le selo ngabantu ba ituaba myamima plasi nipsu umkakulu. Kui plase be sifika kulo, sifika plasin genea ekeiti, imotoa zivunyelo zingeni. Plasin genea ekeiti, izin zezanga se keiti zezama bulu. Abantu na babo banenda uyozala. Ka uku ita kua zinzu zabo, usia pa pambile ufuma ni zinzu zama kalati. Aneyati, umtushala na bantu na ba keyati niyaki. Uku ite apo uyochona ezant, ndabe kunda wesi teleyo. Apo zaufuma na konabantu ba myamima, be se so olweni. E olweni, i ololo olweni esin to, engati indio kuwayo lastobu. Ngapaga ti kula ndawasala be twelve. Akopai this. Abana network no ba kukulu umtu, funeka i amblens, umtu kusuku umtu pa. E landa basala kuyo yenfeni. Ah, mbayo mapanga se ma bulu, nukuzafuma ni network. Ogo kobe la kanti zausla, beten salen nduli. Induli tolo peni. Kula ndawasala kuyo innununchea. Kui yatin ngaani uzofuma na ifemi, kunda ubifane ba inzu, indawaka RDP. Uzofuma ni ifemi es about eight, es salen yatin ngaani. Sisaraua nduwa ngama bulu, ane mixaba, eti kana siku nu koki zinzu kuyo. Uhurumente we di ei, aspatela ma polisa, aspete. Sinabantu beto ba injati, webe beto ngama bulu kui strike, ebbe sinazo. Ngena yo ba bantu ba tikiwa kuxala kui bekiati, funeka be renda imana ba ngenayo, envakuwete yo covid. Goda, bantu bantu be sa ubon umxabu ngena umtu, ba utate, ba beto ngama bulu. Ba bizolo ma polisa, sibizo ma polisa ko mapali, afikaspete. Go twa zapsuku, be to bantu ba kuchu zinzu zabo. Go twa ebu zuku, be kukoma bantu ba tala, be kukoma bantu ba kuleluai, be kukona aitanduka. Abantu ba ngogo, emangena ukwas nobalek. Ngena kasa sabeto yo imoto ya mia bu ya yatsali pichali njezeke Marikana. Siakela noku umxaba mau tatu, ubuysela bantu ba udommyama marabuyselis timasa, kenkoska ku.
Baba Alakiini from Evitandberg. Firstly, I want to state that I support the expropriation of land without compensation. And after that, I want to ask that after this whole process has been completed, the process that follows thereafter should be transparent because we don't want to only see people from parliament who own land whilst we, the people who are suffering at the grassroots, we don't have land. And the people on the farms where we are staying are still oppressed. You'll find in one farm, when we go there, you'll find at the gate, the people who are staying closer to the gate are their wives who are the owning the farm. If you are allowed to move further, you'll find a place where Kalas are being made to stay. They have houses with yards where they stay with their kids and family. If you move further on, you'll find black people are staying in a structure which is like a compound, where you'll find many families or even twelve families in one structure, which means our people, our black people in the farms are still treated differently from other people. And further on, at the place where I'm staying, we are still oppressed there. We'll find eight families staying in one structure. And when we found an open piece of land, we grab it and build our own structure. Later on, the DA government will send the police to come and attack us, sometimes in midnight, at night. And sometimes there would be elderly people and pregnant women and children would be attacked by the police. That just brought back the memory of what happened in Marikana. We really support this bill and wish that the process should be pushed forward and be fast forwarded. Thank you.
Molweni, diai lu isli komiti hiyo nge, ye parlamente. Upumeza lu utetayo, wa kwa mpokele, upuma eti dorens. Diambisana nenkobo etima kubuyelu. Wa wise lo umxaba, kubani kazuabo. Si pila kabu fungu eti dorens. Si ngabanyebabantu abapagati, wesiza esinye, nepo kisi enye. Ungaya zlo ba no zaushera nja numbane, na omneyo umtu. Si pila kabu fungu eti dorens. Si nama farmer pa eti dorens, godi ndela esilambangaayo. Ingati asina i ID, si ngabona bantu ba ngapandla pa eti dorens. Abona bantu ba ngapa lapanga, abona bantu ba ngena ID, ba banne farmer, apo ba permanent kona ba pangilayo. Chega ngo, kusifunua umsebenzi, sifunua i one hundred and fifty. Ungaya zlo ba uzaitata apu godwa au chele ulambi. Au kaya shonge na yongo ufumba ti selo umtu utuza kundukumsebenzi. Asias zlo ba kuchu ma sipegepina. Siakela, umxaba mau uele, kubani kazuabo. Ukwenze zlo ba nati sizo kuazoo ku ziva, sise kai. Ngo, kusizbona si ngabona bantu ba ambeleyo, apa ezwe ni ledu. Abona bantu ba pila epoto olweni, ngabona bantu ba ngapandla. Asina o umsebenzi, sifuna umsebenzi, uwebe kubuyele kuti.
Let me just quickly say, it has been brought to my attention that we have more men and less women. But I'm also advised that there are women that are coming. You see, every woman has a responsibility for herself, the children, and so on. So it's important that women must participate because they have more responsibility than us as men. So we'll give them the opportunity. Can you translate?
I'm Pumeza Mkokela from Ddwarens. Firstly, I want to state that I support expropriation of land without compensation. We at Ddwarens are oppressed. The people who are staying there don't have places to stay. We are made to share a site. Different families will share one site and one electric box. And our citizens are treated like second citizens. People are treated very well, those who are coming from other countries, in other words, the foreign nationals, are treated better than our people. Some of us are unemployed. When we need employment, we are being told that we have to pay a certain amount of money to get employment. Foreign nationals are the ones who benefit more than the citizens of the country when it comes to employment and other benefits. Thank you.
I am Nombulelo Williams from Zuletemba. Greetings to the committee that made all the efforts to come down to us and brought parliament nearer to us. I want to start by saying I thank the decision that has been taken with regard to land. Because this decision which has been taken will also make us as women to benefit. And by benefiting, when we get land as women, we'll be able to feed our families with our small gardens and in whatever form. We thank the committee for giving us this opportunity because we really need land. Our survival depends on land. Thank you.
All of us must become activists for women and children's rights, all of us. Proceed.
Molweni kuba kulu. Diabuli sandi umsu vumile oho, eti chi kam, kunda wesi wa ngoba isendil. Diabulela ngoba kobe nju malunga nembu yekazu. Se mixaba uko ba sibuyele kubani kazu bao. Namdia ikasa le yo inu. Nisa ukumbula apa esmzuwini kunge kutiala be kuko. Iskani webe sikesa tu kwenzeka. Apa eti chi kam. Esoskani webe si san tu kwenzeka sima lunga. Nenkonzo, esisuka ebu khulumenteni, uku bambe se la uzi swa kwenkonzo ebantu inu. Kuteguako abantu, omneyo wa bolelinye, ngomneyo we ifemi liamo, ote wa fuma na udu juula. Na namxanja kagalifuma nungu etu. Imbumbula ika kuchu apenansigeni uye engalweni. Ingati etu pa eti chi kam. Kongo kuba. India o inu inu, godwa, ote ba betu. Baya asilela uku sizi se la inkonzo. E onanto besi kalangaayo ku uzi swa. Komba, asina o umba. Guo na lo ote wa tialala, conflict ite yakona, uku ze sivala u N one. Although si sazo, koba simuvala la N one. We are making, it's a mistake because it's a national road. Unanziga u N one is because of our councillors. From the provision to the national, there is a lack of service deliveries. So that's why si esatea tanaso esoskibu. Esoko kuba masivalu N one, ngo kusisa zuba si rongo. Kuba sifumba magusabelegi zimboze. Bendi teela kuba kukonanina abakulu apa, ye parlamente, ndite teno pamguen. Sitela inkonzo, ote ba betu, maba yake uku stembis ama empty promises. Kusa uzeku benini ukuze kufunua kuba masilungele. Kufuneka, one of us must be the victims. Njenka abango kabatu jujuweyo, godwa ba alfume nangu. So bendi teela, bakulu, kaniken nitumele, amasaka niweni, asniga zele inkonzo. Ngo kuzithoba uku kulu. Dite lukshala bantu.
I am Zukugulia Oho from Jijikamp. I thank your presence here as the committee. And furthermore, I want to state that I support the amendment of this bill, the expropriation of land without compensation. You will remember the incident that took place at Jijikamp with regard to the blockage of the N one national road. That action was caused due to the lack of service delivery. Our councillors, because we are in a small place, they don't give us service delivery. As a result, the people took the decision that they knew was wrong because the N one is a national road. But we took that decision to make our voice heard because we need electricity. And when we talk to our councillors, they don't pay attention to us. So we are happy that you are now here. We are pleading to you as the committee, please do something. Let our councillors make to understand that they owe us service delivery so that we don't need to resort to actions like the previous one that we took of blocking the N one. Because in that incident, a family member of mine was shot. Up until now, that family member did not get any assistance. He's walking around with a bullet in the body of this member. We plead with you, please assist us and make our municipality or councillors take action and pay attention to us with regard to service delivery.
Greetings, Chaperson, and your panel. I'm Ulelo Mamasa, residing at Worcester. I hereby declare that I support the amendment. I, Ulelo Mamasa, residing at Worcester. Residing at Worcester, here declare that I support the amendment of section twenty five of the constitution to allow for us expropriation of land without compensation. This amendment is crucial for the decolonization of our society, for guaranteeing redress for colonial and apartheid land disposition, and for ensuring equitable redistribution of land in South Africa. I thank you.
Molweni. Lechansin di piwa. Kulandi so, nolende. Apa asala kona, usala eti dorens. This out, che. Kulepi si ni niwe yo ngoma, utama niteklin da. Apo, ni sela kona, ni sela eti dorens. Ezmbakweni. Apo ni sela kona, ndiya ikasa la ndaw eti. Umxaba, ngoba uele pi, koba ni kazu bavo, ngoba msaimbi. Kanozela umxaba uele enda oniavo. Kunga achon msaimbi, kula ndawasala kuyo, kube pete ele, ngoba indawasala kuyo imtaa. Kudhuwa nezinja, na manzi amtaa. Ne zinto zetu, siti sishala nja ma tio tio bezmbakweni. Kuslamanzi emvenku, netala novi okange lisonka, emsebenzi inu. Utoma umtana, utu amban, netala ba kaka chonot kaya shua. Au na ne krisio siyabantuwa. Asnasu nenda uku tabantuwe taban. Na obanga papa, kula ndaw imtaa kichuwa nezinja. Au yazi se sho, esno kuayashla ngobantoni. Kokole ngaki ndawasala kuyo, aykote kanga, si pansiko kupano kupile kula ndaw. Obasala pansiko kesu mbana, osa tubuli nani na sexene mini malanga. Ungas ba kango kwenze kantoni. Si ne skale losisfauka maspala oko. Omaspala kati alasneke iprofi empendulu. Ukuti tinasi hokeani, si ngabantu. Tina fifteen years, ni sela kula ndaw zanga ndibone entwi. Che man di kula, nti nka la promise koron, di kulela kula ndaw kani boni ni ngumu. Sisala ne aku, na lenda ba iaku, ni kala, sbe lenda utwa. Senze, lan toye protoas, njege project, sikuazu senze naslime. Senze yonki, ndioyo tu ba sifili se life e right. Tio ti siku le, sifali na banyabantu ba bedni ndaw. Inchungu indawasala kuyo, ngoba aykote kanga, ayokeanga. Ingati asno bantu ba landa. Indiandi ndibono kukeliso, ndikonda ba singa faringa language. Kuna bantu ba kagesuwa na semissebenzi, si nama pasa, si na ntoni. So yiru yachi ko, so yiru yofola. Utoma de aytinga ausayazu buyenzu swa, ndioni ngo umsebenzo yo auwenzu. Usisala na yenchini, ulala kavchu kuna yu, kula ne nganiembeze. Nenda usala kui koma, aykubika kula, kuseko ndokoma. Novi apila, ndioyo pila ausaibonba ngo. Akuseko ma lungelo, ako ouafuma na yo. Titiman kaule njeronda ngo.
I am Landisso Lolele from Ddwarens. Greetings and I thank you for the opportunity. I want to use this opportunity in stating that I support the amendment of this bill. Because at the place where we are staying at Ddwarens is a place called Ezmbakweni. It's informal settlement. We are staying under, there's an electric line which runs over the area where we are staying. The place where we are staying is treated as a dumping site. People even dump dead dogs there. And the place itself is a health hazard because our children can't have places where they can play or where the krisis, where you can keep them. It's very risky for our health. I've been staying there for more than fifteen years, but there's nothing good that I've experienced or witnessed happening in that area. We've tried to get to the municipality and to ask for a piece of land for our housing, but up until now, we've never received any positive response or any promises to what is going to happen when. So we are pleading with you that at the place where you are staying is very bad for our human life to be treated as our place of residence. We are treated very badly even when it comes to employment. People from other, who speaks different language from ours, are given preference when it comes to employing them. You might have all the necessary documents to get employment, including your ID and other documents, but you are overlooked and they will look somebody else. But people who are speaking the same language that I'm speaking are never treated or given a priority like the others. Thank you.
Tell us of all political parties, don't feel offended when people speak from their heart and say they are living under hazardous conditions because those conditions will affect women and children, and that is not acceptable. Proceed.
Zodwa zichab. Ikamalam lungukaile tu be laani. Ndingwalape o wusda. Chairman, thank you very much for this opportunity. The issue of the land, first of all, Chaperson, must not be made to be a political field. It's an emotional issue.
that we are being, we are trying to put into good, good use. So we are pleading with you that don't stop with this moving, these movements that you are doing of moving up and down. Just apply what needs to be done by taking this land and give it to the people. Thank you.
Thank you, this side.
Greetings all. My name is Raees Newman. I'm staying in Paal Drakenstein. I hereby declare and support the amendment of section twenty-five of the constitution to allow for expropriation without compensation. This amendment is crucial for the decolonization of our society and guaranteeing redress for colonial and apartheid land dispossession and for ensuring equitable redistribution of land in South Africa. I submit that the amendment of section twenty-five of the constitution must allow, must look at the following property. The state, including parliament, executive and judiciary, carry an obligation to redress imbalances of the past through enhancement of laws that will achieve redress, equitable redress, redistribute all resources. Property may be expropriated without compensation, A, only in terms of law, of general application, or a public purpose or in public interest. Remove section three and replace with three. The state should be custodian of all South African resources, inclusive of land, mineral resources and water. And relevant legislation should be passed to clearly define and constitute state custodianship and natural resources. For the purpose of this section, A, the public interest includes the nation's commitment to land reform and to reform to bring about equitable access to all South African resources and property is not limited to land. Five, the state must take reasonable legislative and other measures within its available resources to foster conditions which enable citizens to gain access to land and an equitable basis. Six, a community, a person or community whose territory to land is legally insecure as a result of past radical discriminatory laws and practices is entitled to the extent provided by the Act of Parliament, either to torture which is legally secure or to comparable redress. Remove section seven. A, no provision of this section may impede the state from taking legislative and other measures to achieve land-water related reform in order to redress result of past racial discrimination, provided any departure from the provisions of this section-
Thank you, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Time up, this side.
I'm Nossisi Tony from the Dwarangs GG Camp. And the reason why I'm here there at GG Camp, we, we struggle a lot. First of all, we don't have electricity. We've been short when we had a strike or took a mass action because we're demanding electricity. We don't have proper housing, people staying there. Our children don't even have crutches. They get injured. Even recently, there was an incident where our structures were blown away by wind and our children got injured by the blowing, sink or material that was blown away by the wind. So we are pleading with you. We are not getting any services, proper services that we need. We don't get electricity and even the actions that we take resort as to being assaulted or getting injured or removed forcefully. We demand or in fact we ask that we be given land. And furthermore, we the people who are staying there, the councillor made it clearly that he's not going to assist us because we are Basuto speakers. I don't know why do we have to speak a particular language to be, to benefit from the, from what we supposed to be getting. Because we do have ideas to fulfill South African citizens. All we need is to be treated equally with other citizens of the country. Thank you.
Tribalism and racism are unconstitutional. Nobody must be a tribalist or a racist in South Africa. Proceed.
My name is Rosina Ramakaza. All protocol observed. I'm not gonna read what is written on the pamphlet, but I support everything that is written by AMC. And the call of duty, the title of the law. The salat is a little timber, upon Mandela, when the Gukwakse Mandela Square. Payana is in my key, the law. Kukwabantu upon Isole Temba, upon Salayo. Gaphanga says, I'm queen. Kutaak says, I'm queen because it's a lot of things. And the way you're talking, I'm trying to understand it. I'm going to say, I'm going to be a king, I'm going to be a president. But I'm going to be a little bit more, but I'm going to be a little bit more. And this is what I want to do, and I'm going to pay you. And that's all I need. I need to allocate this money. In a space, it's going to cool. This space is just so bad, I'm going to build it. I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it. I'm going to space, it's so bad, I'm going to go and do it. No, I'm going to extend it, I'm going to do it. Bandile is a little timber, I'm going to do it because I'm going to talk. But I'm going to plot it, it's in the end, it's a church. I must follow, I can't do it. I'm going to do it, I'm going to mail it, send it to the church. I'm going to go to the church, I'm going to do it. But I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it. And then, I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it. I'm going to store it, it's a little timber. Like, I'm going to plot it, I'm going to do it. I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it. I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it. It blocks it, it blocks it, I'm going to do it. So, I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it. See, I'm trying to understand, I'm going to do it. I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it. I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it. I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it. I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it. It's not going to be a question, I'm going to do it. I'm going to do it because I'm going to talk. But I'm going to talk, I'm going to talk. I'm going to talk, I'm going to talk. I'm going to do it, it's in the end, I must follow, I can't do it. I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it. I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it. I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it. I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it. I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it. Upon Isole Temba. I'm going to talk, I'm going to talk. Because I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it. I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it. I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it. I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it. I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it. I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it. I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it. I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it. I'm going to do it, because of it, I'm going to do it.
Thank you. Translation?
I'm Rosina Ramakaza from Zuletemba, the area called Mandela Square. And the place where we are staying is called the Asiakweni because we are staying with pigs. There's been some cries that these pigs have to be removed there, but they were never removed. The place that is, the area where, where we are staying is not a place that is suitable for us to stay. We need land for that. And my second point is with regard to colony crish, the crish that we, I'm assigned to, which is very small. We don't have space for children to play or to do any other activities. But there is a space close by which we have tried to apply for it from the municipality, but the municipality refused to give us that space. And the other challenge that we have is the sewage. When the sewage, there's a sewage blockage there, that damage that comes out there comes into the space that we are owning as our crish. Furthermore, if we can get the land, we can, that can allow us to be involved in a lot of activities, like practicing small gardening, giving children a space for them to play and exercise is we need to get this land. But there is a piece of land which they say was meant for crishes, but people who are homeless think that we took that space and forcefully stay on it. So we are pleading with the people from Zuletemba to take charge of the challenges that they have, so that we don't trample on each other's toes. Thank you.
I'm Moleni, I'm from the parliament and I'm from the especially to the commissars of the EFF. I'm Oli Swachonase and I reside at Drakenstein. I hereby declare that I support the amendment of section twenty-five of the constitution to allow for expropriation of land without compensation. This amendment is crucial for the decolonization of our society and guaranteeing redress for colonial and apartheid land dispossession and for ensuring the equitable redistribution of land in South Africa. I submit that the amendment of section twenty-five of the constitution must look as follows. Property. The state, including parliament, executive and judiciary, carry an obligation to redress the imbalances of the past through encampment of laws that will achieve redress and equitable redistribute all resources. Number two, property may be expropriated without compensation. One, only in terms of law of general application. Two, or a public purpose or in public interest. Remove section three and replace with the state should be the custodian of all South Africans' natural resources, inclusive of land, minerals, resources and water. And relevant legislation should be passed to clearly define and constitute state custodianship of natural resources. For the purpose of this section, the public interest includes the nation's, the nation's commitment to land and land reform and to reform to bring about equitable access to all South African natural resources and property is not limited to land. Five, the state must take reasonable legislative and other measures within its available resources to foster conditions which enable citizens, which will enable citizens to gain access to land on an equitable basis. A person or community whose tenure or land is legally insured as a result of past racially discrimination laws or practices is entitled to the extension provided by an act of parliament, either to a tenure which legally secure or to comparable redress. Remove subsection seven. No provision of this section may impede the state for taking legislative and other measures to achieve land-water and related reform in order to redress the results of the past racial discrimination, provided that any departure from the provisions of the section is in accordance to the provisions of section thirty-six-one. Nine, parliament must enact the legislation referred to in subsection, subsection six. I also want to plead with this committee that is here today. In Drakenstein, I think in March twenty nineteen.
Thank you very much. You have done very well. Thank you. Next.
I'm Moleni, I'm from the Puma GG Camp. I'm going to talk about the church because I'm going to talk about the church. I'm going to talk about the church because I'm going to talk about the church. So, I'm going to say, in the end, it's a little, it's a little, it's a little, it's a little. It's a little, I'm going to crash, I'm going to school, I'm going to man, I'm going to man. I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it. And then, I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it. I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it. I'm going to say, I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it. I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it. But I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it. How can China bank, I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it. I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it. I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it.
Translation? Greetings to the committee. Unfortunately, I could not get the name of the speaker. But I'm from GG Camp. At GG Camp, people there are struggling, are suffering a lot. They have no crish, we have no school, no electricity. When we try to demand electricity or we take steps to demand electricity, we got short. Many people are injured at GG Camp. And again, when it comes to employment, people from other countries get preference over us. We are overlooked when it comes to getting employment. So we are pleading to the committee to come to our assistance.
I, Paulie Ustain, deciding at Drakenstein, hereby declare that I support the amendment of section twenty-five of the constitution to allow for expropriation of land without compensation. This amendment is crucial for the decolonization of our society, for guaranteeing redress for colonial and apartheid land dispossession and for ensuring equitable redistribution of land in South Africa. I submit that the amendment of section twenty-five of the constitution must look as follows. Twenty-five, property. One, the state, including parliament, executive and judiciary, carry an obligation to redress imbalances of the past through and amendment of laws that will achieve redress and equitable distribution of resources. Two, property may be appropriated without compensation. A, only in terms of law of general application. B, or a public purpose in the public interest. Remove section three and replace- Remove section three and replace with three. The state should be custodian of all South Africa's natural resources, including of land, minerals, resources and water. And relevant legislation should be passed to clearly define and constitute state custodianship of natural resources.
And goes. Eh, I'm April May. I'm going to talk about the church. I'm going to talk about the church. I'm going to talk about the church. And then, I'm going to talk about the church. 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 And I'm going to talk about the church. 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 Eh, I'm going to talk about the church. 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 Man, come on. I'm going to talk about the church. I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it. I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it. I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it. I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it. Man, I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it. I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it. I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it. I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it. This is, I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it. I'm going to do it. I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it. I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it. I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it. I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it. I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it. I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it. Yeah, I'm going to do it. I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it. I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it. I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it. I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it. I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it. I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it. I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it. I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it. I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it.
Tata, say a bullet, say a bullet.
I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it.
Say a bullet, say a bullet. Say a bullet, say a bullet. Side?
I am April May. I thank you so much for your presence here. After hearing that you are coming here, I could not miss this opportunity. I want to plead with you that you should not, you should not always put the blame on the councillors. Please go to the municipalities and take the plight of the people to them. If they don't believe you, take them around to where the people are so that the people can show you where the municipality is failing. Because that can lead our people to fight with their councillor and yet the problem is not with the councillor. And furthermore, all of us as we are seated here, not even a single one of us want to fight. But the problem is that we don't get the service delivery we're supposed to be getting because we don't have water, we don't have electricity. And then my second point will be on farming, as I'm farming on livestock. Our livestock is roaming around. We don't have grazing land for them. And I don't understand why we can't get a farm where we can keep our livestock like in other places. So we are pleading with you that please come to our rescue. I thank you.
I'm from GG Camp, Sandils. 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 I'm from GG Camp, Sandils.
I am Pamela McQueenah. I stand here to support the expropriation of land without compensation. I am one of the people who were involved with this strike action which was taken by the people complaining for what the service delivery that they are not receiving. As I stand here, I'm performing duties of somebody who's a councillor. Whilst we have a councillor. The councillor, when we go to the councillor to complain for certain issues, the councillor will claim that we did not vote for him. So I don't know whether you have to be a voter for a particular councillor in order to deserve a service delivery. Because the councillor only assists people who are members of the DA. We have different fights with this councillor, that is myself, because we, I'm standing for the rights of the people. And yet I don't want to be a councillor. The only thing I want, I want the councillor to do is head duties. The people there don't have water, don't have electricity, don't have pollution facilities. So those are the things that we are fighting for. And there's also, this area where we are staying is also used as a dumping site. So there's dirt all over the place. When I go to the councillor to confront him about this, then he'll be personal with me. And this become a personal fight between myself and this particular councillor. And yet I don't want this. The only thing I want is for, to fighting for the rights of the people. Thank you.
My name is Dorothy Vanerine, I'm from Mandela Square, Zuletemba. I'm African speaking, Wat Komitee, and Wat Seventeen. But the problem that we have, my problem is, I'm going to let the ground return to our ancestors and to our after-buried children. All what the state wants to be fair is to think as us, as grown-ups. Us as elders, we would like a piece of ground there for us, for us, for us. And to create a plan. When we are here, we have the ground for us, we don't. As us, we have the fence and the smoke is big, you can't go there, there's a bit of dirt that will stand up, the dirt, the dirt. So I can't move, I have the ground in my yard. So I'm a human. That's why I'm afraid, as it's been for a day, to think as us, as humans, to give us a piece of ground. And for me, as a woman, for the abuse of our childrens. I'm a social worker. But as it's been for a day, our childrens are abused and our, and our grown-ups are abused. Three weeks ago, we had a big disaster of a year old baby who was burned by the girls. And when we stand up, it was foreign. When we, as grown-ups, when women stand up, we're told, as grown-ups, to say, but the disaster is not a disaster. But the pain is a massive pain. Ma, di pain, as a maase, pain, as, os, as vrouens, se, pain, as, ein, frau, seer, krye, da, krye, ali, frau, seer. Darum, ko, fra, as a blive, bei, di parliament, da, da, let, won, deng, an ons, eh, for os, net, a stiki, aardig, eh. Da, os, net, kan, as seifa, os, opset, for ons, kners, and vrouens, wat, zo, mo, abuse, ward, paya, tanki.
Good afternoon to you, my name is Dorothy Van Reine, and I live in Mandela Square. I am glad that the land that had been taken away from us will now be given back to us, the descendants. Um, all that I want to plead to the government for is a small piece of land, so that we can have our livestock there, and also so that we can plant our herbs. I'm asking this for the women. I am a healer, and that is why I am pleading with you to give me a piece of land so that I can plant these herbs that I need. I also work with the social workers, and I see all the abuse of the women and the children in our area. Not too long ago, a father burnt the eleven, eleven-month-old baby, and they are foreigners. But, um, we went to speak about this case, but we were told that it was not ours. But I want to say that all women feel the pain of other women. And I want to ask parliament if they could please give a piece of land so that we can build a safe house for these people who are being abused. Thank you.
Diabule, san, san, ngapandi. Diabule, sa, chepc, eh, nawani, pas, the parliament, debo. Ikama, lan, mbonkos, langos. Mbonkos, langos, ikam, langos. Eh, chepc, epsho, ngentala, si, pilai. Epsho, ngomtalo, yo, mama, ba, ipilai. Chepc, obshlo, ngo, bona, umtong, mama. Gofo, enz, enzin, kokusa, eh, wella, N1, eyo, zumeja, chepc. Eyo, zumeja, ndi, gofo, uklok, sibala, kanga, kana, ne, za, modoku, N1. Ez, ya, za, modoku, N1, this bachelor zone, umaspaal, awet, agafunu, banu, ndiki, toilet. Umdan, unan, 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 thirteen years, wella, N1, uyeto, gofo, klok, uyor, relief. Ni, pina, nita, madungelo, mama, si, awanya, zas, ngaba, ndongo, dad, but, naspaal, le, la, chepc, si, atujol. Senze, ndoni, na, tin, na, siba, ngo, ndongo, dad. Because, si, a, zambal, le, ama, lungel, ife, kona, ndongo, mama, anyazu, kaba, ndasba, be, giri, ngapambi. Namshan, njongu, si, amtata, sunbe, get, slalwe. Di, funa, ndikwenze, la, indo, ngen, chepc, ben, dera, maspaal, chepc. Kamaspaal, zot, kadi, strike, ba, zefuna, kwenze, ndu, as, funa, strike, fun, ma, ba, si, kuba, si, ufak, izkalazo, zetu. Omne, wabo, pa, uz, uan, uan, what, si, dome free? Uze, what, si, dome free? Eh, tetan, ni, language, chepc, undi, kaba, ndumvele, da, on, bona, ndimtong, what, si, dome free? Ube, kwen, ngo, banu, es, tuluen, city, chepc. Saminyole, at, magameletin, as, ene, konz. Go, kutuwa, si, dome free? Kasba, si, apina, kuwa, leliso, chepc. Oka, ni, tin, konz, na, os, fuma. Sfai, na, sngabuis, umsham. Si, akala, buisan, umshaw, uban, ndigasbaw, wazoko. Chepc, on, non, filo, eh, nbono, umdan, ujala, enzeleni, chepc, ujala, enzeleni, agana, playground, agana, ndon, akon, nda, we, facetetie, basala, kulu. Baso, kuseleka, banu, duan. Be, epsho, akun, ndikwenze, kiskane, kupende, gutiwa, asikatali. Kutuwa, woma, masbawo, eh.
I am Bongikosi, eh, greetings to you, cheperson. Eh, our life, where we are staying, is, eh, very, is a pain itself. Because where we are staying, we don't get services at all, we don't have, uh, all the facilities we need to have. Our children don't have playgrounds, as a result, they play on the road. Eh, uh, we don't have pollution facilities. Eh, at four, uh, at four AM in the morning, you'll see people, or women, having to cross the N1, which is a very busy road, to go and relieve themselves. Even children are, are forced to cross that N1 to go and find place to relieve themselves, because they don't get, uh, the necessary, they don't have the necessary facilities. When we had a march and go to the municipality to submit our demands, we were labelled by somebody that we elected to lead us, or to fight for us at the municipality. That person referred to us as people who are dome free. And that person was speaking a different language from what we, uh, from the language we are speaking. And they did not realize that some of us can follow the language, eh, labeled us as the people who are dome free. So we are also being told that we don't care about women, and yet when we fight for women and children, we are being, uh, shorted. Like, uh, 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 on the days when we had our marches and strikes, we are being shorted, whilst we are fighting for the women's and the children's rights, for their comfort. Thank you.
Eh, molweni, ndingombo, miseneki, as, ndisuka, ef, zenbe, seres, zen, duli. Eh, nam, tisa, u, nganela, nanese, izkalazo, zetu, umshaba, melu, tat. Nam, da, nganela, nanese, izkalazo, zetu, umshaba, mau, tatwe, ki, nganelan, na, landi, vitetan, kusis, be, epsho, city, ef, zenbe, hasela, ngagawtle, endule, seres. Indo, yenzo, basi, ngatlale, gawtle, pana, i, ndawe, slala, kuyo, inu, inu, ende, ngo, maspaal, pete, abantu, abamnyama, kagu, ubi. Asina, zindawo, slala, slala, endawo, ne, inu, singa, banu, abaniz, abamnyama, ene, gen, ngo, slala, emku, kuno, mne, singa, banu, abaniz. Ende, enye, indo, yenzo, yo, kune, kreni, ez, ya, mabapata, kwen, lukish. Uba, uyeg, maspaal, uyot, ulungu, eto, fuma, ninge, lo, koba, ibe, ngabatla, abati, saeta, uba, masio, komba, la, traini. Oka, ni, kunonbanu, ambapans, umaspaal, angafunu, unyosa, pezu, lesndambi, nesu, unyosa, ngamaku, nesu, uan, bisepesu, ukuze, tin, esfuma, nukusele, kuwa, mbanii, engos.
I'm Bongikosi, jase, from Wittenberg. I support the expropriation of land without compensation. I also agree with the previous speakers, that the place where we are staying in Wittenberg, and even Serra's. Eh, the municipality don't care about us as black people. We do not have place to stay, and when we complain to municipality, the municipality doesn't give us the necessary attention. And we also have the challenge of electric, electric wires, which are meant to walk, to run on the ground, uh, on the ground. And we, as the community, we decided that we have to lift those, uh, electric wires up to safeguard, uh, the life of our children. We are not treated very well by the municipality as black, so we are pleading with the committee to please assist us.
Molweni, ikama, lam, ndusansu, mlad, zisuka, ef, zenbe, etulbar. Diavu, me, na, na, ba, umshaba, ma, ubuliswe, banu, ndu, mba. Kuba, kinda, ujala, kuyo, etulbar, kune, ndawo, eh, engmlambo, omkunu, abu, kona, abantu, be, kue, imi, kukuyav. Ene, kwa, netayo, lamlambo, yatwal. Abantu, abaninz, abakwa, zusavai, bakos. Indo, esfuma, pa, mlanjini, nalamanza, amtaka, ngen, apaisi, nfinzav. Ene, gen, ngo, ku, ezinti, nikula, zinto, ez, ez, kiwaktaala, ez, ngakewanga, ngapakat, ez, ngakamire. Diabule.
I'm Saint-Denis, Umtati, eh, from Tulbach, eh, under the municipality of Wittenberg. The problem that we have in our area, there's a river that is running there, the Tulbach River. And, uh, when, uh, the, eh, the river is, uh, overflowing, the kind of flood, uh, is pushing some jet into the houses of the people. Eh, people are struggling there in that area due to that river. So I plead that we should get a proper piece of land for our housing. Thank you.
Ah, ekwale, eri, wirians, dankiseen, ekas, edoet, zet, is, mi, nam, fonkas, mi, fan. Ikni, man, baye, van, yele, wat, beni, ken, ni, ma, ekas, madam, ne, dangbar, eh, ek, vedagi, bees. And si, as, on, di parliament, wan, ek, ook, baye, dankiseen, da, da, la, itge, komat. Wirians, danki, bei, yele, parliament, ba, itge, komat. And si, as, amal, wat, beni, na, uiso, war, kamisika, hard, and, tite, kwar, eh, wale, net, kort, and, krachta, no, net, kort, and, krachta. Um, ekas, a, borul, um, zid, gashere, fa, di peral, da, ni, Drakenstein, area, um, zet, ukmas, gron, gehat. Si, zos, vedagi, pra, van, gron, zet, os, ukmas, gron, gehat. En, wa, har, we, ek, um, galakak, vu, as, um, that, os, no, ni, os, gron, kan, terag, kreni. Okay, fan, ons, had, gron, gehat, eh, het, di, gron, eese, mos, na, for, goodong, ge, gi, mos, prabmas, van, for, goodong, iso. Di, gron, eese, je, mos, an, di, wize, gron, afavat, was, het, for, goodong, ge, krye. Eh, ons, had, no, ni, for, goodong, ge, krye, di, na, had, ons, gron, afavat, was, in, di peral, as, het, no, a, hard, se, story, for ons. Di, reskri, for, goodong, wize, gron, afavat, was, ons, gron, had, ook, afavat, was, het, ni, for, goodong, of, kreni, for, goodong, ni. Namlek, het, ek, ook, si, as, an, zuk, had, dun, in, bo, kana, fra, fra, si, as, a, Mowbray, yele, ken, mos, a, Mowbray, ern, zen, i, kap. Het, ook, a, baye, keer, na, afra, had, dun, mal, ezer, ba, karan, an, yele, for, goodong, ge, gi, an, mesa, wize, grone, afavat, was. Ma, nou, se, yele, da, no, for, me, ni, ma, di, parliamente, no, ni, good, gering, ge, gi. Da, os, dat, mu, terag, a, besorgan, yele, ni, zo, os, la, om, afri, parliament, om, terag, te, kom, na, os, eh. Ma, nou, se, goodong, vial, ha, udan, yele, for, goodong, yele, as, pal, yele, se, mo, yele, kri, opdrakta, van, di, parliamenta. Ha, udan, amal, yele, no, for, os, mu, makas, gi, da, nos, gron, terag, ik, ni, man, di, Drakenstein, pal, a, tete, bat, mos, tu, se, ma, ge, gi, da, nos, gron, mu, afavat, ward. Sal, ook, stem, one, percent, samat, me, da, ons, os, gron, da, mu, terag, krye. Eh, as, ek, get, terag, kan, ga, na, di, fol, kana, van, gabera. As, ek, terag, kan, ga, na, di, fol, kana, van, gabera, si, zin, for, di, lira, no, gashere, da, os, mos, baye, keer, eh, het, os, kimi, wix, gedon. But, skia, plaza, kan, besuk, baye, hard, se, story, si, zin, for, di, lira, gen, no, mat. Baye, plaza, to, os, kan, besuk, eh, as, baye, se, story. Mesa, wat, se, ba, hundred and twenty, ta, mesa, wat, in, a, store, blai, wa, da, geen, privacy, as, i, zol, se, um, private, as, ni. Amal, in, ein, store, kink, nas, you, name, at, ma, plus, minus, wo, di, hundred and twenty, ta, mesa, in, ein, bei, ali, plaza, was, a, kan, da, zet, baye, se, story. Di mesa, da, basa, nu, su, dangbar, gabisa, yele, as, EFL, lira, wan, yele, ni, ankum, for, os, kuma, seti, os, blai, na, for, yar, obiri, plaza. Os, as, si, si, er, ge, krye, di, bur, os, si, as, eh, eh, na, vani, plaza, kini, as, om, for, os, os, wo, da, net, af, geset, vani, plaza, af. So, na, i, na, karir, af, so, na, i, na, good, os, kom, vi, ame, doktor, papira, you, name, at, ma, di, bur, wale, di, an, sini. As, ah, i, sa, yele, as, EFL, lira, kan, dun, da, os, kaba, goodong, krye, ma, nou, se, os, yele, sal, yele, kutuwa, kan, krye. As, di, ri, bur, as, o, aptria, ke, yele, estefi, lan, in, eh, as, on, an, far, ba, yele, kom, bis, yu, man, blai, negative, sickness, you, name, at, ala, proban, covid nineteen. Ma, baye, dang, be, lira, zul, ife, la, se, ek, ba, direk, ni, man, yele, ke, dana.
Um, I'm Edward Vlock from the Paul Drakenstein area, and I just want to thank parliament for coming to give us an opportunity so that we can be heard. Um, we are speaking about land, and we're speaking about compensation for the land that had been taken away from us. Our land had also been expropriated under the previous regime, and we were not compensated for our land. We went to an office in Mowbray, and we asked them why we were not compensated, but they said parliament must first approve this. Well, if we are not going to be compensated for this, we want our land back. And this land is in the Drakenstein area. What we've also done is we've visited a number of farms, and there are many sad stories. You find that up to one, one hundred and twenty people living together in a storage facility. The farmers don't care for us, they evict us at will. There are also many illnesses where people are clumped together in these type of groups. So here are many problems in our area. Thank you.
Thank you very much for being a wonderful people and for observing the covid nineteen regulation. And thank you for the commitment to a peaceful resolution of disputes. And thank you for agreeing to be activists for women and children's rights. And, uh, thank you for saying no to gender-based violence. And thank you for realizing that we need civic education on land rights. And, uh, to all political parties, thank you for understanding that we are here so that people can talk from their hearts. And no political party or councillor must be offended and when they are criticized, because the people must speak their heart. And when they criticize us, they are building us to make us better public representatives. And we heard you, that you need implementation, implementation, and implementation. Next weekend, we will be in Limpopo and, eh, Plogwane and Waterberg. And as these political parties, we are going to work together and conclude the process so that before the end of November, we are going to make a report to parliament and bring about the changes that you want. So we will not come back with excuses. We are going to carry out the mandate that we have given us. And thank you very much for your cooperation. And I also want to thank my colleagues in front here. I want to thank the parliamentary staff, the interpreters, the security. You can see, we all.